In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6, PL 1975, C 231, S 1 amended 2006, C 70 S 2, Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending notice of time, date, and location to the extent known the agenda of this meeting to the Asbury Park Press, The New Coaster, on January 8th, 2021 via email. Copies of this notice have also been placed in administrative building bulletin board, district schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, filed with the city clerk on January 8th, 2021. The Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character to seed in a diverse, evolving, global society. Roll call, please.
Ms. Sabas Anderson?
Thank you. I'm here. Thank you.
Ms. Breach, Ms. Cook, Mr. Grillo, Mr. Lotaraca?
Here.
Mr. Remy?
Here.
Mr. Saunders, Ms. Lizinski?
Here.
Ms. Etienne.
Stand for the flag salute. We're going to skip to public comment, the participation part, board policy 0167. If anybody would like to ask a question, make a comment, please come to the mic, state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Beverly Lyons. I'm resident of 1701 Ocean Avenue. And first of all, I'd like to say good evening and thank you to Mr. Ruiz and his assistant in meeting with myself and one of my colleagues from our resident with the question concerning the curriculum and what it did it consist of the Amistad curriculum. And we were thoroughly impressed and pleased that it has been implemented, it is working, and we're looking forward to our students even being educated fully, fully with the truth of what has transpired in the past. Tonight, my question is directed to you in regards to our COVID-19 consideration for our students as well as the staff, the teaching staff. What do we have in place concerning starting this new school year? Should we be full-time in the buildings, the facilities? How is, what is done? What is going to be done concerning the children and the teaching staff in regards to their temperature taking, taking, I don't know, but I'm asking, what is in place for our school district? Thank you.
Dr. Adams, you want to briefly just go over it real quick?
Thank you, ma'am, for your question. And thank you for coming to meeting, Mr. Ruiz. I know following your meeting, he indicated it was very productive-
Yes, it was.
-and enlightening to you and your colleagues. And so, again, we thank you for your care. With respect to your second question regarding our COVID plans, one of the things that we've had to do as part of the state is our Road to Return Plan, which you can find that on our district's website. It lays out all of the particular mitigations that we have had to provide to the state. That's on a documented level, right? On a more personal level, one of the things that we have done over the course of my time in getting ready to open up is we've provided back in August and this upcoming, the 30th would be the second, we provided a vaccination clinic with the Monmouth County Health Department back in early part of this month. We've documented and required masks in all of our buildings. You'll see the signage. We've been consistent with that since the beginning, and that's also in our Road to Return Plan. In July, I reiterated the mask requirement, not only during the summer, but for our summer school students and throughout. We've reiterated that we are coming back full-time with our staff and students. So now everyone is aware of the mask mandate. This past week, as I indicated earlier, the governor issued a second executive order regarding vaccinations and/or testing. And so, we're working in collaboration with another community partner, the VNA of Central Jersey, to provide vaccination opportunities, not only for our staff on our convocation afternoon, which is September 7th, which will be in person, but when the staff return to their individual schools, they will have four different locations where the VNA will come onsite to do and administer vaccinations for all of those staff members that choose to do so. We're also going to be providing that same service on September 8th to staff. Then, we're also going to be providing again on our back-to-school night for our upper elementary school, grade six, as well as our high school on the 28th, I believe. And if I'm incorrect, both of those back-to-school nights, one is on the 27th and one is on the 28th, to those families. Again, what we have been trying to do is to provide access to health information and resources that are here in the city of Asbury Park to help our community stay safe. That's on the vaccination and the mask side. In terms of our cleanliness procedures, we have been on the forefront, like all other districts, with electric static cleaning, ongoing every day, multiple times a day, and wiping, wiping down common areas, practicing social distancing. So, all of the expectations in terms of mitigating the spread of COVID-19 and even the Delta variant, we have been out front, very vocal, and trying to find and provide resources to the community. So, I am confident that we will continue those same steps and procedures as we get ready to return. I will be walking the buildings tomorrow to do building inspections. We've done other building inspections. We've replaced several other things to make sure that when our students return on September the 9th, Thursday, September the 9th, that our buildings are ready, prepared to receive them, and that we will be getting instruction on day one.
Thank you. Also, what was crossing my mind as you were sharing this very important information, and I'm pleased to hear that those things are being done. When the students arrive that first day, will there be a taking of temperature with them? Okay, that's what I was concerned about, the actual students coming into the building.
So, one of the requirements is for staff. We've been working and having some procedure in place whereby staff will signing in in terms of procedurally, you know, affirm that they are not, you know, COVID positive and the same as like. And we were following the same procedure with our students in terms of the healthcare, I mean, the health check-in in the morning, that parents, if their children are ill, they will keep them home. We don't do contact tracing. That's been something that has been consistent with the Monmouth County Health Department. We still will be adhering to that. In terms of the daily check-in, we will be following that procedure with our school nurses and our school administrators. So, we still will be adhering to that. We will be much more consistent. Again, this is all evolving and it's ever-changing. So, we want to be cognizant of that. We know that we can do better. We are focused on continuing to improve the process, but we want to make sure that we're transparent in making sure that individuals know what the process is and how we intend to adhere to it.
Okay, because I was concerned about the families being educated with the fact of what is expected of the parents, the guardians, in sending their children. And then with us being in place at the facilities to, you know, see that they are well and able to come into the building. So, thank you. Thank you very much.
I appreciate your comment. And your questions.
Anyone else? Any comments, Mr. Hastings? No? I'm going to close the public comment. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act allows for exclusion from discussion at the public portion of a meeting, as certain matters is outlined below, and whereas the Asbury Park Board of Education wishes to discuss such matters made and will be made such discussion public when a proper conclusion has been reached, now therefore be resolved on August 26, 2021, the Asbury Park, New Jersey, for the purposes of personnel. If, that's it, right? Personnel issue? And that's it? Personnel.
Personnel and litigation. Did I understand that?
Personnel and litigation. I'm not, I do not know if action will be taken, so I'll just say action may be taken. Can I have a motion?
Second.
All, go ahead, roll call. Or you want to, all in favor? Any opposed? It will be probably about 15 minutes, I would imagine, maybe 20 minutes. Public roll call, Mr. Hastings.
Sabas Anderson?
Here.
Ms. Breach?
Here.
Ms. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Lotaraca?
Here.
Mr. Remy?
Here.
Mr. Saunders?
Here.
Ms. Lizinski?
Here. Are there any presentations tonight, Dr. Adams?
Yes, ma'am. First of all, I want to thank the board. We're about approximately 12 workdays into returning into session. Just a couple of updates about where we are and what's going on. As I said last month at our July board meeting, I will be holding listening and learning sessions. Earlier this month, I had the second listening and learning session. The third is scheduled for September the 21st. I've been providing updates to the board about what's going on weekly, as well as publishing the Blue Bushet Bulletin. On the Blue Bushet Bulletin, which is on our website, is a weekly update about what's going on and providing transparency to the community. One of the things which is a highlight, this September, in collaboration with our CNI Department and our new grade configuration, we will be moving to have a district-wide gifted and talented program, which will be the first in a long time, to my recollection, having a full district gifted and talented program, starting in grades three and culminating with our Dream Academy program in grade 12, along with our other college promise programs, our CTE programs, and our partnerships. So, I'm very happy and proud to say that we'll be launching that this September. Along with our gifted and talented program, another opportunity that we have is continuing to foster our partnerships with our local community healthcare professionals, whether it be the Monmouth County Health Department or the VNA. They've been very cooperative and supportive in providing vaccinations as well as testing within the community. We know that we have a low percentage in our community, and with our intention and expectation to come back full in-person, we've been very clear in communicating that out to the community on a regular basis. I wanted to also address some of our program offerings. As I mentioned in our first executive, well, first public comment section, we've been trying to be very transparent about our offerings. We've been consistent with publicizing on our social media, as well as our placards around the city, to make sure that our registration is available and accessible to our community members, as well as our offerings. One of the things that I have been adamant about is that we in Asbury may have challenges. However, we have the access and the opportunity to have success. We have and provide regardless of our estimated $5 million projected budget loss, and over the last few years and going up to $24 million, we have, may have had to reduce staff, but we have not reduced our program offerings for our students. We have tightened our purse strings with Mr. Hastings and Ms. Brown and the business department, along with the guidance of the board. But some of our offerings that I think we need to clarify and promote, again, is our music and visual and performing arts programs that we offer here in the district. We offer chorus, we offer band, we offer music technology, we offer music as an elective, fine art, music as a special, music and art as a special, integrated music. We have partnerships with the Disney musical in our schools. However, we've had to go on hiatus with them due to the COVID pandemic. We have our partnership with NJ PAC, which does our third grade recording program. Again, another program that was placed on hold due to the pandemic, but we will be relaunching this school year. We have our community partnership with Lake House Music Academy and the Asbury Park Music Foundation. And so, we offer a plethora of music, visual, and performing arts to this community. We are hoping to continue some of those partnerships. We are in partnership and communication with some of our local trade professionals to offer some of those offerings to our students. And I would be remiss if I did not discuss our CTE programs at our high school, which we begin offering our students in grade seven and it finishes through 12. And so, earlier, our students here came up and discussed their concerns. Again, I want to implore the community to understand that we appreciate that level of self-advocacy of our students, and it goes to our social-emotional program offering. Our students express their concerns, they maintain their composure, they were articulate, and yet, they required and demanded answers from the adults. And that's all that we can do to continue to promote that type of response, particularly from a all group of young black men who stood at that podium and expressed themselves. And we would be remiss to not say that they were not perceived as angry. They were passionate about what they felt was wrong or issues that they felt they were being slighted. And so, I want to, again, publicly commend those young men on the football team for coming up and speaking without an adult representative, but representing themselves, regardless if they understood the dynamic of all of the interworkings. And so, this is a reflection of what and how we are promoting student advocacy through our social-emotional programs. And again, that is our presentation. September, we will have our presentation on our gifted and talented program for the board, for my first September presentation. But we will have our formal September presentation on our district-wide gifted and talented program.
Dr. Adams, I had a question. Is it okay to just speak right now?
You may speak, Mr. Grillo.
Thank you very much. Sorry, I've got something in my throat. With the gifted and talented program, are we going to learn more details about kind of the curriculum and how all that kind of shakes out in the next couple of months?
Yes. One of the criteria that we looked at in response to our students being in the Dream Academy and the Dream Scholar Program was chunking the NJSLA standards to ensure that our students were receiving the standard level and the rigor connected to being able to pass the Accuplacer by the time they finished eighth grade. We also recognize that we have been focusing on remediation for quite a while, and we have not provided enough offerings for our students who are academically excelling. Again, contrary to popular belief, not all students in Asbury Park are reading 12 grades below, beginning in kindergarten. Contrary to popular belief, the students in Asbury Park are not all poor. Contrary to popular belief, our students are capable of excelling and exceeding, which was evident of us graduating our second cohort of students from the Dream Academy program, which got their associate's degree from Brookdale before their high school diploma. And we have four more cohorts in the pipeline right now. So, that's an indication of the type of academic excellence and offerings that we have and that we will continue to offer. However, we need to be very mindful that in that presentation, the criteria is not locking students out of that access for opportunity, but it is also making sure that we are building the capacity within our instructional ranks in order to provide the rigor in the instruction that is needed for our students to be successful and confident in taking other standardized assessments.
Any other questions? And the state monitors are here tonight. I guess we'll go to acceptance of minutes on A1 and A2.
Hey, for that, I just would like to put on a table, I would like to propose that-
Mr. Saunders, I cannot hear you. You have to speak into the mic-
Oh, I'm sorry.
And make sure it's part of the recording.
I would like to put on the table that as part of our June 24th meeting, there was a proposal that Chris Demarest, who was going to be a part of the athletic advancement program, be part of the team. I would like to, I would like to have that be part of our agenda tonight and put him as part of the team as far as the athletic advancement program, which would be negotiated, pay and all that other stuff would be negotiated would be between Dr. Adams and himself. And I need to put that up to vote.
So, you're saying you want Dr. Adams to negotiate with him?
They would discuss their terms.
I'm not quite sure.
Okay, so I can put it a quick agenda item together if you want.
Yes, please.
So, are you reading from something, Mr. Saunders, that I can look at, just to make sure I have the spelling right? Or is there anything there that I got?
No, this is just my notes.
But is there, okay, but is there anybody who has, I mean, my understanding is that this was on the June agenda?
It was on the June 24th agenda.
Mr. Hastings?
I can look it up. I've got the Google Drive up.
If you do, I would just like to look at it. I mean, at the end of the day, I could just write something that's generic with respect to authorizing the, you know, the superintendent and business administrator to negotiate a, I mean, is it a, I mean, I was saying to you before-
And this was a 40K year deal, but-
Because typically, we like to be as specific as possible. But when we can't be, we like to put in contingencies so that you guys don't obviously, you know, blow through some sort of budget line item or something. It's a significant, $40,000 is not a small amount of money.
Is it? I'm sorry. I'm looking at the agenda. You said it was June 24th, right?
It was the June 24th meeting, yes.
Okay. So, was there a proposal that was on the agenda specifically that you just-
Yes.
So, do you want to just bring up that same agenda item from June 24th?
Yes. Let's do that then, and then that would be easier for everyone.
Here it is. Item number 29, page eight of the June 24th agenda? Yeah.
Yeah, it was June 24th.
Recommend board approval for Chris Demarest Student-Athlete Advancement Program. The program will provide student athletes with the opportunity to be fully prepared to meet the NCAA Eligibility Center guidelines to be eligible for college athletics.
Just to paraphrase, it's just like they would be able to go to D1 schools and excel.
Okay. And the other, obviously, so this is the, this is the, okay, so this, from a, this is really a conversation, I guess, amongst yourselves as to whether you want to put this on the agenda tonight as opposed to-
I want to put it on the agenda tonight.
The other option is to go to the Monday, I think it was, the discussion was to have it go back to the Athletic Committee.
My proposal is to put it on the agenda for tonight.
Okay. So, is that a motion?
Motion.
Okay. So, you would need a, you need a second on the motion. So, someone will have the second, so Mr. Saunders has made a motion. Is there a second on Mr. Saunders' motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Remy?
Discussion?
Yes. Again, when that was brought up in June, it was asked to have some type of description, job description, what he was going to do, some type of plan of action, not just a blanket hire somebody without any background information. I have not seen that yet. It has not been to the Athletic Committee yet. So, on my recommendation, I'm saying I want to talk to Mr. Gervino. I'm not going to move forward with it. You guys motioned it. That's fine if you guys voted in, but it's not coming from the athletic standpoint because I didn't see any information that I asked for.
I'd like to make a motion to table because we don't have the information that we need to make an informed decision regarding the duties, background, or any references the individual has. And similar to June, so I'd like to make a motion to table until it gets vetted.
So, we have a motion, you have a motion to table now. Is there a second on the motion to table? So, now you have a motion.
Roll call, please.
What do we, roll call?
There's no discussion on a motion to table. It has to be a roll call. It's Robert's fault.
So, this is a motion?
I don't understand.
There's no-
Wasn't there a motion before?
Motion to table has to go first.
Yeah, so here's how it works. And we get into some technical rubber rules difficulties here. But you have a main motion, which is the one that Mr. Saunders made, it was seconded by Mr. Remy. That's on the table. And then, there's been a motion to remove that from the table, which would now be entertained. You had a motion, you have a second, and then you have a vote on the motion to table. And then, if it were to pass, you would be basically removing Mr. Saunders' motion off the table again. If it were to fail, it would be here again, and we'd have a discussion on the main motion, which is Mr. Saunders' motion.
So, basically, the table is, trumps my motion, and then we'll go from there. Okay.
That's correct.
So, you, yeah, so you, right. Everybody understand? So, you know what you're voting on? You're voting on whether or not to table the motion that Mr. Saunders just made and Mr. Remy seconded.
Roll call, please.
Wait, hold on, there's a question.
No, there's no discussion on a motion to table. I'm just, point of order, unless it's on this procedure, not the issue. It's a vote to table.
To vote to table.
This is the vote to table, right.
Okay.
Mr. Hastings?
Ms. Lizinski?
I'm just following procedure. Yes.
Ms. Breach?
No.
Mr. Grillo?
No.
Mr. Lotaraca?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
No.
Mr. Saunders?
No.
Motion to table fails.
There's discussion on the motion that Mr. Saunders made. Does anybody have any discussion on?
I do. I, so, what I just want to make sure is that everybody on the board is clear of what this recommendation of board approval says, because I found it on the agenda. As I remember, I think I'm the one that tabled it to get some more information. There was some talk about Mr. Demarest himself. I did my own research to see, you know, what this guy's, you know, record is and all kinds of stuff. That checked out. And I just want to make sure that everyone is clear in terms of the actual agenda item and the language that it says. And the only thing that I have that I would hope we would get is a little bit more clarity on the returnables and like what the outputs and outcomes are. But I think that that's something that as long as we set, or as long as we instruct the superintendent to set certain guidelines and certain outputs and outcomes that we expect, then I honestly don't have a problem with it. But I want to make sure that everybody is clear on the actual language that's in the agenda item. Is everybody clear on the language there?
No.
Like in terms of, like, does everybody know what it says on the agenda item? Or can it be read?
You can read it again, Joe, but it doesn't say too much. It's not clear to me what the duties of the individual, and that's another expression I had two months ago.
I mean, I can read it.
You can read it again. Read it again. Read it again.
So, well, I, I read the first part. That's in, in the record. The, the second part says, "The program aids with college admission requirement, FAFSA Assistance Scholarship Negotiation Guidance and provides professional development sessions for, for students, parents, guidance staff, teachers, building staff, and direct administrators contingent upon satisfactory criminal history review. Total cost forty thousand dollars." And then it's got the account number. I mean, the job description is there. The only thing that I want is to make sure that, that there's accountability and transparency in terms of what, you know, who, who is he reporting to? And who does that person, when does that person report to? I'm assuming the Athletics Committee.
I would believe that he would report to the superintendent because ultimately that...
Mr. Saunders, I can't understand you. I'm sorry. You have to get closer to the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I believe that he would, or she would report to the superintendent and she would, or he would be accountable to the superintendent at that.
That person would report to the Athletic Director.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes. And the Athletic Director would also monitor and report up to my office.
Okay.
And the Director of Curriculum Instruction, as well as Student Services, the, the happenings of, of that individual. But that would be rolled out and laid out as a direct report to those, those directors. But more importantly, because it's dealing with academics as well as athletics, it would go between both the, of those directors. But more, but more importantly, the academic, the athletic piece through the Athletic Director.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm just gonna say one more thing, and then you guys can vote whatever you want to. But I would not hire anybody without any type of history check, what, what they've done in the past. Would you hire a superintendent without any type of prior history, what they, what they've accomplished, what type of goals they want to achieve? This gentleman, I don't know anything about. I don't know what he's done in the past. I don't know his, I don't know what his stats are, what his program is. And again, he might be, he might be stupendous. I don't know. But I'm not gonna recommend somebody that I don't know anything about. I'm not gonna, I'm, I'm not gonna blanket.
I would, I would agree with you.
And I'm sorry, that's the way I stand.
Yes, Mr. Lauterrock?
This is, by my count, not the first instance in the last two months where issue, or issues have arisen from the athletics area that did not go through proper channels and up to the board for consideration. And I find that as an individual board member deeply concerning, and I therefore have significant issues and questions as to why this is happening. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
One thing I'd, I'd like to add, unless somebody has another comment. If, if I remember correctly, when we discussed this two months ago, there was one reference from an individual that had put their title as principal with no letterhead of anywhere that they were employed, and the only thing, they said he was a coach. There is no information about his track record, if he's done this somewhere else. I'm not quite sure exactly what he's doing, because it sounds like something that the guidance counselors, the coaches, and all the staff members we have in the school district should be able to do to make sure the athletes, as well as every student in this district, meets the qualifications to go on to college if they wish. So my concern, I, from two months ago, is we're, I don't know how we're hiring a consultant, because it wasn't something that, that's something that I guess Athletic Department decided to present to the board. But why do we need to spend another forty thousand dollars for, for the duties that should be able to be accomplished in-house? And if I don't know where he's done this before, and I have no references that are considered like legitimate references, that actually says that somebody who works in a school district has used him in this capacity, I can't vote, I don't, I don't think it's responsible to vote for somebody unless you don't, if you have this information. And bypassing committee, I, I don't like that procedurally, and I think it's a slap in the face to the people who are on those committees. And I'm gonna, I'm just telling you, I'm not gonna vote for it.
I don't think we bypass committees because it wasn't on our agenda for...
Mr. Saunders, I did not interrupt you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. It sets a, it sets a...
I don't mean no disrespect, I'm sorry.
It sets a bad precedence. And I agree with Mr. Lauterrock on that and this breach. It sets a bad precedence that you're stepping over other board members and other committees.
And first of all, I want to say I'm sorry for interrupting you.
I appreciate that.
You know, I'm not in...
I appreciate that, no. I know. No offense taken. Anybody else want to make a comment?
I have a comment in terms of the Athletic Director. What was his final say on it? Or when, when, when was the last time that he spoke about, about this position? Because I remember he had brought it up.
I think it went, I think it was in the curriculum committee.
It was something odd, right? Like, like it was curriculum, but...
It was curriculum, but the job is not about curriculum, so I'm not quite sure why it was in curriculum. That's what I understand.
I think it's, I think it's, the job is a dual role as far as curriculum and as far as getting the best, giving the student the best opportunity to get the best scholarships. That's what it's about.
Well, I think you're inferring that you're putting words into the resolution that we don't have it in, on paper. You're hoping that's what the job entails.
No, but that's what the job entails.
It doesn't say. And where has he worked before, Mr. Saunders? If you know a little bit about him, do you know where he's done this before? Do you have any information?
I'm not sure.
Any other questions? Comments?
Only comment I really have is when you said, "Why is not done in-house?" Like, me personally, I know a lot of student athletes that come from Asbury Park, and after they graduate high school, like, it just, it's like they become stagnant, and you just see them walking around, you see them outside on the street just chilling, just on the block, you know, just doing things that they shouldn't be doing. They didn't get that opportunity, they didn't get a chance to, or that exposure that they needed with athletics to go to the next level, to go to higher ed, or go to Juco, or things like that. That's why something like this comes into play. It helps them, gives them an opportunity to be seen, to, you know, show their talents. But that's all I gotta say about that.
I understand that concern, and it's everybody's concern, so I don't know why the board would want to spend forty thousand dollars instead of making sure that the individuals that are responsible in-house do what they're supposed to do to make sure the athletes and all students get to where they, they want to be. That's all.
I, I'll say this, if I may. I think that what Mr. Remy was saying was that throughout the years, we have had some talented kids that could play basketball, football, and academically, they weren't prepared to go to college.
Yes.
And so they missed out on opportunities. And we have, they are now young adults or adults that have their children in this district, and the opportunities, they were missed opportunities because of past failures in this district. I believe that we need to have people that will be in place, that will look like our students, that will have their best interests in mind. And so I am in favor of voting for this person.
Thank you for that clarification.
So the resolution, do you want to put anything else in there, Mr. Grillo, to, for what you're saying about something, talking to the superintendent, I'm not quite sure what that add-on was?
I, for me, I, I have, I have no problem with it, as, as long as there is, that, that there's accountability and that there's, that there's certain metrics that are, that are reached. It can't just be like some blanket, "Yeah, he's gonna help, you know, student athletes go to college." Well, I, I, what I, what I'd like to see as part of this is, is what, you know, to make sure that there are certain reportable outcomes that are able to be reported back to the board, to the Athletic Committee, from the Athletics Director. And I think that's something that we could put into, you know, into, into the...
So you want to approve this with the caveat that the superintendent will come back to the board with the details of the...
Or actually have Athletic Director.
I'm sorry.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
You could, you can, yeah, you can't have the Athletic Director report directly to the board. I know you weren't necessarily saying that, but...
No, I'm saying to, to, yeah.
So what you would do is perhaps you could put an added section in there that, that requires the board, requires a, some sort of like check-in with you all, with the Athletic Committee, so that the superintendent shall report on the, I'm just gonna write this down while I'm saying it. The superintendent, the superintendent of schools, of schools shall, shall provide an update on the...
Progress?
Yeah. I'm just trying to get the terms, to make sure I'm getting what you, what you're all thinking. On the progress of, what is the name of this organization again? Does he have an LLC or anything like that? Or is it just him? Is he an independent contractor? Like, I don't, I don't really know what he is.
I believe it's just him.
What's the, so I say, of Mr., what's his last name again?
Demarest.
How do you spell that?
D-E-M-A-R-E-S-T.
And how often do you all want, I mean, obviously, this, you don't want to, he's a consultant, so, so how, how often is the, is a check-in expected among those who are thinking about this amendment?
I would say, it's, it's just from my, the way I report a work, I would say quarterly.
Quarterly?
Yes. Are you guys good with that, or? Quarterly, too.
Right. Because we have an amount not to exceed.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's obvious, because you got...
I would say every month.
The background check concern is gonna be a...
Mr. Remy just said every month.
I'm sorry, sir. What'd you say?
Once a month? Would that be better than quarterly?
Well, once, the only thing is, you know, this, it, this is a, you know, it's a significant, usually, this, a once a month check-in like that is a significant amount of work for the, I mean, it could be perceived as a lot of work for, you know, for the district. You could do that, but it's gonna require, I mean, once you do this, it's gotta be done, right? So you're creating a standard, perhaps. I mean, maybe it's one of those things where you put quarterly, but then if you have a question, you just call your superintendent, or the board will be updated. I just want, I'm trying to give you, you know, once you pass something, it has the, you know, in between these meetings, we, as you're, and I include myself in this, just my firm with your, with your administrators, we carry out your desires in between your meetings. So when you, when you vote on something, it has like a very significant impact. So let's make sure that we put in the minimum as opposed to, you know, the, the possible, like, if you want an update once a month, there's no problem with you, you know, calling the superintendent or emailing and say, "Hey, Dr. Adams, what's, what's going on with, how's, how's, how are things going?" Or, "When you see him, how are things going?" That's fine. But if we're putting it in here, it has to happen. And if it doesn't, then it's a failure to achieve your objective. Do you understand what I'm trying to say? So, go ahead.
The other thing is, you're, the, this particular role is working with students on meeting certain academic metrics. So a monthly update is not reasonable or, as I would say, academically prudent, because we don't have, and we haven't, his metrics haven't necessarily been laid out through the Athletic Department and the Curriculum and Instruction Department. So when we start talking about the support that will be provided, other than some of the services and meetings that will be held, there will be no metrics for you all to, to get each month. And so it, and we don't do that with other consultants. And so it would be very tedious, and the information that you would get would be minimal in that, in that direction. And so we, I would caution the board, and the board can, you know, move in any direction that it so pleases. However, if we are talking about services, then we're talking about looking at resources, and that would be in combination with the Athletic Department, as well as our other academic areas and Student Services from Guidance. So therefore, those things have not been flushed out. And we can update the board on those going on, but as the board so moves, you would, it would be exercise and frustration to expect something monthly that would be a repeat of minimalism.
And I also, I also think, I also think that putting it on your superintendent, you know, you can do what you want, I'm just, I think it's better for Mr. Demarest, who is the consultant, just like it would be for us as your board attorney, to report it to you, or to report it to your superintendent, who can report in terms of your Athletic Committee. So what I would suggest, what I would suggest, and you can't, you can't, he's a consultant, he's not an employee, so it's a little different under the Ethics Act, that, but, but you can't direct your Athletic Committee to do anything. So what I would say is, Mr. Demarest shall provide the superintendent of schools, or I should say, shall, or I could say, the superintendent of schools and the Athletic Committee with an update on the progress of his district work with respect to student academic metrics on a quarterly basis. I mean, that's, you know, obviously...
Okay, Counsel, this, this is where I'm losing you. What happened to the Athletic Director doing more work since this is what got us here to begin with?
Okay, so, so the, the Athletic Director, you, as a board, can't direct the Athletic Director to do anything. You can direct your superintendent to do something, and a consultant you can have do something. But having you directing an Athletic Director is, and this is your action, so that's, that's the issue. But practically speaking, I presume that Dr. Adams will hold your Athletic Director accountable for working with this individual as part of his responsibility as Athletic Director. I just don't want you guys to get into ethics issues by directing employees other than your superintendent of schools doing it. That's why I left that out.
Thank you. So it's clear the Athletic Director is responsible for this individual. This individual does not perform well, that's a reflection on the Athletic Director. Is that correct?
I just, I just want to be careful, Mr. Lauterrock, in terms of positions and comments. There will be oversight, there will be a proper reporting mechanism put in place if the board so directs me to do so, in the proper form and fashion, to make sure that through the chain of command and the proper organizational structure that we have in the district, that I will report back as I would with all other consultants, either getting updates through committee and/or presentations of individuals to the full board about other programs and offerings that we provide and/or partnerships and/or consultants that we utilize.
And that will be a...
That's all I'm asking.
Yeah. Can I see a, can I see a, Mr. Grillo, could you take a picture and maybe text me or something, a picture of the resolution? Just, you know what I'm saying? Just so I can...
Yeah, I, I gotta find it.
Just so I can write something, because I'm a little, I'm afraid we're going to lose something here in, in, in the hastiness of putting this together. So there's a couple of things. I'm concerned about the cost issue. I keep hearing forty thousand dollar number, but I want to make sure that it's an amount not to exceed forty thousand dollars. Is there some sort of hourly rate? Like, how do, how do...
That's what I was gonna ask. With the accountability regs, was there an hourly rate? Did we do any other, any other consultant, like, seek out anybody else? We're supposed to have more than one person, or is it three? What's forty thousand dollars? You have to seek other...
Well, I'm sorry. Above sixty-six hundred dollars, you need two quotes. Over forty-four thousand, we need a bid, or a state contract, or a...
Okay, did we get, did we, we didn't get too close on this, did we? So two... Did we, we didn't get two quotes on this, did we? So two quotes were not received?
Was this, was this something that was, I mean, this ended up on the agenda before. So how do we end this, how did this end up on the agenda last time? Was there, was it flushed to the business office with respect to quotes and everything else?
No. My understanding, it was placed on the agenda and it was tabled by Mr. Grillo because it had not gone through the process to answer these questions that we're all talking about.
But I, if I'm correct, they went through committee or, or not?
No.
No.
I found it. Okay.
Yeah, I have it now. Yeah, Mr. Hastings sent it to me. He had it.
Quicker fingers than you. I just want to say something in terms of, you know, a lot of people may think that this reporting back to to us is, or at least, I'm speaking just for myself. So I did the same, I said the same spiel about a different entity that we're, you know, awarding money to a couple, a couple of months ago. And I think it's because I really want us to get into the habit of not just giving the money out to a consultant or a contractor and not knowing what happens and just going on faith. And so that's why the the reporting back is so important to me personally as an individual board member. So if I sound like a broken record in the next so many months about specific things reporting back to us where normally they haven't in the past, that's that's what it is. So I just wanted to make sure that that's understood.
Just want to reemphasize to all the board members, we did not get two quotes, which is required. So I just want you to be aware of that when you vote, that we didn't get two quotes on whatever this consulting service is, and that's required. So I just want you to know.
Yeah.
That's a problem, so.
I just assumed that had been vetted in that regard, that it was on the agenda. We have some, I have, I have some concerns about the bidding here. I'm just trying to figure out, like, I'm looking at a couple of things here as we're doing it. I'm trying to get you to your objective. It's just.
I mean, if it didn't follow the rules, then then, then we gotta go back to the drawing board and get quotes.
Well, great.
Now, there's a, but there's a motion on the table and vote to accept it. When you vote, you'll have to make a decision how you're gonna vote.
Or you can with, or Mr. Saunders.
Or you can withdraw your motion.
Yeah. But hold on, I'm just looking at this real quick.
B four thousand as opposed, as opposed to forty thousand, you have to get two quotes. Am I correct or no?
Forty four hundred?
No, you need two quotes above sixty six hundred dollars. And from sixty six hundred to forty three nine nine nine, it's the two quotes. And above forty four thousand, you're then into the bidding.
Right, unless it's like, unless it's in the U.S., like an unspecified service or competitive contracting or something like that.
Mr. Saunders, what do you want to do?
Oh, I'm not getting, getting in trouble for anyone.
Do you want to, do you want to withdraw your motion?
I will withdraw my motion and we can get another quote from someone else.
We'll revert, do what we have to do to do a progress.
I'm not getting in trouble.
Listen, I will just say this, and I can see that there's a desire to to move ahead as much as possible with something like this, maybe even with this guy. I'm saying that just to be very clear about what your desire is. But I want to make sure that as an organization, you obviously don't violate the contracting law because that's an issue. I mean, not to mention, even if you adopted this with the purchase order and everything else, it could put your business office in jeopardy. So let's just. Yeah, right, right. Let's, let's, let's take a step back here for a second. If this is something that you guys are interested in pursuing, which you clear, you clear, I can, I think, I think you are. I was sort of reading the room as this was going on. You want to follow the rules. But let's do this in a way that's very safe and legal. So the only thing that would have to happen, I mean, you could authorize him to do work under the sixty six hundred dollar threshold for now, at an amount not to exceed. And we can, you know, give you, you wrote sixty six hundred, is that what it is now? So you could authorize him to do work for a certain amount to begin the work, if that's what you want. Or you could just wait until it's all done in as kosher a way as possible and we could, you know, push this down the line. So your choices now, as a board, are to amend the motion so that it's, you know, you could do a segment now and then potentially more later. Although, understand that if the idea is to do something more later, you're still back in the same position where you'd have to solicit bids. You can't award something knowing that it's gonna go more now, you're just, you're not supposed to do in the first place. Does that make sense?
Oh, yeah, you can't say that we're gonna do sixty six hundred dollars and do we do forty thousand dollars worth of work.
Right, right, right. You're like, we're gonna do four thousand now. Don't worry, we'll get you, you know, you can't do that. That's not, right, right, right.
So Kenneth, you want to be safe and just withdraw it and then we'll take care of it and get it on the next month's agenda if it's vet, anyway, if things vetted.
But I want it on the next month's agenda, but the thing about it is right now, Kendall has seed, so I'm withdrawing.
So you just, you just have to, you just have to, you have to, the idea would be that, and you can just ask your your business administrator to get two quotes if practicable. The term is if practicable. So if there's a similar type of service, Jeff will find out by sending a message to his list server, I guess, tomorrow.
Mr. Bush, ah, go ahead.
We would work with the A.D. because he's familiar with the specifications and such and would have information and contacts in that arena.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to the agenda. We'll do the acceptance of minutes, A one and two, ten A, B, C, and D. Can I have a motion?
Can we, can we also add eleven to that, the calendar?
All right, eleven to the calendar.
Thank you.
Have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, no? Rule call?
This is a motion for the minutes on A one, ten A through D, and the calendar on A two, eleven. Mr. Espreach?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Abbes Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Mr. LaRocca? Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Lozinski?
Yes. I also want to add the the mask and vaccination mandate support. Do you have anything written up there?
No, I have to.
Or illustrious.
So is there, is there something you want me to model after in particular? You want to just write a general motion in?
Just a general motion.
In support of Governor's executive order two fifty, it's either one or three. I forget which one. This has been dealing with us all week. I'll get it for you. Okay.
Okay. Dr. Adams, you want to do consent agenda?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Vice President. I would ask for a consent agenda from B one to B eight, including the addenda.
Have a motion? We'll have to motion in second before questions. Mr. LaRocca, go ahead.
Thank you. I think I'd know that by now. Just too quickly, just a little more, I'm not sure what the in-school suspension jobs are. And one on our acronyms, I should probably know, one of the job descriptions. ISS, is that instructional support position or what, what is ISS?
ISS is in-school suspension?
Oh.
Yes. A place you've probably never seen, Mr. LaRocca. And so what was your other question, sir?
So it sounds like it's basically just one question. The in-school suspension jobs, I don't quite follow what those were.
Okay. So as you know, we as the district have been moving towards more restorative practices in our approach to handling socially emotional issues with our students. And so with us creating the alternative learning lab position at the upper elementary school, which is more consistent with our district direction with handling restorative practices, and at that grade level, we do not suspend students. We are moving towards, like I said, restorative practices as opposed to disciplinary measures. And so with the need at that grade, we have approved in July the alternative learning lab position. That was a job created back in June and so on. And so with the need for the in-school suspension at the appropriate grade level at the high school, that is the reason why we have gone with making those adjustments in our disciplinary handbook and disciplinary structure to support our direction as a district to more restorative practices.
These were positions whereby a staff member would be instructing a student who was in school suspension?
They would be monitoring students.
Ms. Breach?
Quick question regards to B four, item five, dealing with the salary adjustments and corrections.
Sir?
With B four, item five, with the salary adjustments. Now, the step program that they have in place, is that, does that go by how many years a person is with the district? Like, is there a reason why, like, if it's their first year hired to the district, that they automatically jump up several steps?
Yes, ma'am. That is when those are hard to fill positions and the individuals are coming and making a significant less. And as you know, we try to at least put them as close to, but we have to make some adjustments. And that is the reason why we try to bring those individuals where they are, close to their their projected salary, but it is a cut nonetheless.
Did we cut a couple of high school coaches this year, assistant coaches? Would that be considered a hard-to-fill position?
Athletic coaches?
Yes.
Hard to fill?
Right. Did we cut a couple assistant coaches this year for football? My question is specifically out of F, like, we approved that subject for step one and now it's adjustment step three, and you're saying it was a hard-to-fill position, but we cut two of our assistant coaches this year, didn't we?
That was not, at the time that I was here, and this area is coming from the athletic committee, correct?
I believe that was a result of the negotiations committee, was it not? When we got, when there was one less.
So the negotiations with the A.P.E.A. did amend the coaching and extracurricular guides as well as some other issues.
Correct.
And they moved from four steps plus an off guides to three steps. So step one, step two, step three at the top for salaries. And that was used to create savings that then, right, we redistributed. So there are three steps for the assistant football coaches.
So we hired the individual at the top step?
Yep, yeah, why would that be?
Was this individual a coach last year?
I, actually, I do have a question. How, how does this, is this an example of something that needs to get reported out to the athletics committee as well?
Athletics has nothing to do with their pay grade.
No, I understand. I just.
Or it's more personnel or recommendations.
Right.
So this is a correction from our original approval, I guess, a month or so ago? So that's what, so it's a correct, it's a correct estipend, so I guess the individual was hired in the first step, I'm assuming. So I'm not, I think the question was, Mr. LaRocca would be the reason why it would be corrected to the top step of a guide, first year as an assistant.
It just doesn't, it, it's not, I mean, dealing with any particular individual. It's just that I know that we, that that person was hired step one. We approved that person because he was a volunteer before, so he's getting paid this year. So that's why, when I pointed, when I saw that, I'm like, okay, well, he was already, if there's a reason why he went from step one to step three, I have no problem. It just like, it just unusual to jump back kind of steps unless, you know, there's some other reason that we might have made a mistake or if it is negotiations, I don't know. It's just a question, so.
Is there some way that we can put a condition on that for the, the acting superintendent to review that F conditionally to see before it actually takes effect? If you want to amend your motion for consent agenda, whoever made the motion?
Do we want to table just that one, item five F?
Then you go, go right ahead. Motion to table?
Motion to table five F.
Because it doesn't affect the position because the individual's in the position. It's just that step one.
Correct, right.
I'll, I'll second. Rule call?
This is the table B four, five F.
Correct.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Ms. Abbes Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Breach? Mr. LaRocca? Mr. Remy? Mr. Saunders? Motion to table carries.
Any other questions on the consent agenda motion? Any other items, board members? No? Rule call, please.
This is all other items, page B one through B eight. Mr. Saunders? Mr. Grillo?
Yes, abstain on B two G.
Ms. Abbes Anderson?
Yes, abstaining on B two G.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Mr. LaRocca?
Yes.
Ms. Lozinski?
Yes. Is this personnel matter?
All motions carry.
Do we have, okay. Mr. Hastings? On consent agenda? Should have five votes on, wait, wait. Can we go back for a second? If it's a personnel, we need five.
Five yes votes.
Correct, so I didn't realize that was personnel. That does not carry.
Which, which number?
B two G.
Can?
I have four affirmatives.
Can we, you can change your, we can change your vote right now. The two people can change your vote. If you can, it doesn't carry, if you can at least approve the individuals you may have a conflict, not have a conflict with, then at least those individuals can proceed in those positions, if you want to change your.
Yeah, I mean, okay, then I'll change my abstention to a yes.
Was there, was there a conflict, though?
Could you state your conflict, just in case?
Well, so the, I just want to make sure because one of the people is in a political committee with me. And so I usually, just traditionally, I just abstain from voting for for that person. And so that's why, but if it's, if there's nothing that, yeah, if there isn't any, any clear and present conflict of interest, then.
There's, they're just, you work with them on something?
Yeah, they're, they're on the municipal committee.
Oh, there's no conflict. I mean, there's no legal conflict. You may feel uncomfortable for some reason, but there's no legal conflict. And it, and the problem we have tonight, because of the limited number of board members we have, you have to get the five yes votes, and it doesn't seem like there is otherwise. But, that, that's still, I mean, if you're uncomfortable, you could just vote on next time you have a full board, retroactively.
I'm fine with it if you're fine with it.
I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Legally, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
So, there's a yes for me, too.
Okay. That settles that.
So, Ms. Abes Anderson, Mr. Grillo, you're amending your abstentions to a yes?
I am.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, glad we did that.
Mr. Hastings, whenever you're ready.
I have a motion for all items C one, number one, through C five, number one.
Any discussion? Rule call?
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Mr. LaRocca?
Yes.
Ms. Abes Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Uh, yes, abstaining on JCPN.
Thank you. Mr. Saunders? Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Motion's carry.
And I have one more thing. Our attorney's gonna read that resolution, reference mask mandate.
Okay. This is pursuant to your request that I draft a resolution. Good thing I brought a pen tonight for you all. Be it resolved that the Asbury Park Board of Education hereby supports the requirements contained in Executive Order two fifty-one, signed by Governor Philip D. Murphy on August sixth, two thousand twenty-one, which mandates that all staff, students, and visitors wear face masks in the indoor portions of school district premises with limited exceptions. So, it's...
Have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Rule call?
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Abes Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. LaRocca?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Anybody want a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Volunteer favor?